Welcome everybody to the Friday, March 5th, 2021 Special Club Meeting for the Carter County Board of Education. I appreciate everybody being here. God has granted us a glorious day and I see a lot of unfamiliar faces in the audience and I'm happy you are here. The first thing we're going to do is we're going to have Mr. Travis Day give us the pledge and the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the Father of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God and indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Bow your head. Dear God, we are thankful for this day we have been given. We pray for wisdom, strength, and guidance as we make decisions about the education of our children today. Amen.
While moving along, do we have a motion to consider the approval of the meeting agenda?
So.
Reverend Goodwin made a motion. Do we have a second? Ms. Wheatley, second that. All in favor? Raise your right hand. Very good. The meeting agenda has been approved and we will now move on to the agenda item. Consider proposals with discussion and possible action on the future of the Marine and Science and Technologies High School. Dr. Jackson.
Good morning, board members. Thank you very much for gathering early on a Friday morning. For some of you, this is actually the fourth consecutive day that we've been together as we've had multiple meetings and community events. I'm sure that you may not have expected to spend as much time in service as you have been recently when you courageously step forward to offer yourself in service to the citizens of Carteret County, but certainly on behalf of the school system, I want to thank you for the time and effort you put into the work. I certainly also want to welcome all that are here. We very much appreciate the passion and advocacy for each of our students and each of our staff members in each of our schools. I'd also like to recognize in the audience, one of my colleagues and now friends, Dr. Tracy Mancini, who's the president of Carteret Community College. She precedes me in service by a full month. She has just celebrated her ninth month as president of the community college. I've just, this week, celebrated my eighth month. And so we've been newbies together and have just been delighted to have the opportunity to work with her in great partnership across many programs impacting the students of Carteret County. And so we're certainly delighted to continue in that partnership with Carteret Community College and delighted to have the opportunity today to consider sailing forward with MAST Early College. As I arrived now almost a year ago in the early stages of interviewing for the blessing that is, and I mean that in a heartfelt way, the blessing that is serving as the superintendent of this incredible school system, I made a commitment to the Board of Education. And then I further made that commitment to each principal in each school. And the commitment was that I would serve each school in Carteret County Public Schools as much as I served any school in Carteret County Public Schools. And that certainly includes MAST. As I've had the opportunity to be in our schools, to work with our principals and faculty, I've been absolutely blown away by their dedication and conscientiousness and the way with which they approach the work. And that extends to the faculty and staff of MAST Early College High School. As I have been in the classrooms, as I've been in the lookout room where the students gather, they have lunch there, they use that as a workspace. As I've had the opportunity to serve bus duty with Principal Johnson, as I've had the opportunity to be on campus, I have seen dedication from the faculty and staff. I've been just excited to see the work of our students. And hopefully, now eight months on the job, that commitment that I talked about over a year ago in interviews and in the initial meetings with principals has been borne out in my actions. And so I'm very delighted to have this opportunity to talk about our future with MAST Early College High School. In terms of preparing for today, it was important to me to approach this work with all the due diligence that it required, to spend quite a bit of time to understand as much as anybody could who's not been here for most of the journey, all that has transpired to bring us to this moment, to look into the past as appropriate and to look into the future as we navigate our way forward. And so that work has been predicated on lots of people. There's been a lot of voices in this work and very important voices. And so I certainly want to do a great job in authentically presenting those voices. One of the first, and I certainly want to highlight, is Principal Corey Johnson, who's also with us. I very much appreciate Mr. Johnson's work. One of the most important things is One of the most important things a superintendent does is recommend to the Board of Education, men and women, to serve as a principal of the school. Recently, research came out from the Wallace Foundation that said, "Second, only to classroom instruction is the importance of a principal in a building in terms of the success of students in the classroom." And so finding amazing principals is incredibly important, and as I had the opportunity to recommend Mr. Johnson to serve as the principal for Mast Early College High School, I shared with him that our expectations would be someone who was dedicated and loyal to the school, someone who would advocate for the school and give us all in service to the school, and we've certainly seen that from Mr. Johnson. Recently, I had the opportunity to be at East Carteret High School for a basketball game. I was looking forward to cheering on our students, and as I walked into the gym, I was not surprised to see Mr. Jay Westbrook, who was there to support the student athletes, the students, and the community of East Carteret. I also was not surprised to see Ms. Kay Zamorina, because Croatan High School in the girls' basketball game was playing East Carteret, and she was there to support the student athletes of Croatan High School. I was surprised to see in the bleachers Mr. Corey Johnson. As I had an opportunity to chat with Mr. Johnson, he shared with me that he was there to support his students, because a young lady who attends Mast was playing on the Croatan High School girls' basketball team, and another young lady who attends Mast was cheering with the East Carteret cheerleaders. And so seeing Mr. Johnson in the stands supporting his students was exactly what we expect from all of our principals. He's been just absolutely instrumental in working with the faculty to birth the concept for the proposals that you'll hear today, and so certainly want to say thank you to you as well, Mr. Johnson. Thank you for your work. I've mentioned Dr. Mancini and Dr. Brown, her associate at Carteret Community College. They have also helped in this work. We actually have had the opportunity to meet in Dr. Mancini's office to review the proposals, and we certainly appreciate the college's partnership in Mast and all that they have offered and continue to offer for that program and beyond that program, the many programs and the many partnerships we have with the community college. We certainly appreciate that. A big piece of today is the research. The research that has gone on in terms of really digging deep into the legislation around cooperative innovative high schools to really digging deep into the information available through the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction around cooperative innovative high schools is presented primarily on the website that they have information and really digging into the resolutions the Board of Education has passed as we've gone along, and then certainly the study report that was released and really using that to hear the voices that came out in the study, and I certainly appreciate that. I've had the opportunity to meet with the faculty of Mast, to sit down and really have great conversations with them, to hear their voice, and was absolutely delighted to have the opportunity to be invited to a parent advisory council meeting and to meet with the parents and to hear their voices and to hear from them in a very authentic way. And so I very much appreciate their time and energy and sharing with me. I've met with our cabinet staff. The cabinet staff's here with us. They have been very instrumental in the work in terms of ensuring that we're crossing our Ts and dotting our Is, and I appreciate their leadership in our school system. And then finally, board members, having the opportunity to meet with you individually and in small groups to really dig into this very important decision. Thank you for your work and all of the time and energy that you've put into this that really predates my arrival. I do appreciate that, and I look forward to our work together. North Carolina Department of Public Instruction would share that the benefits of having a cooperative innovative high school are these: school choice, giving an opportunity for parents to look at other opportunities and make good decisions about where their students would be best served, opportunities for smaller class size, opportunities for increased pen involvement, opportunities for innovative classroom instruction, and opportunities for exposure to local business needs. In terms of North Carolina cooperative innovative high schools across the state, the most recent report, in fact, Dr. Mancini just shared that with me, states that there's 130 cooperative innovative high schools in the state of North Carolina. The lion's share of those, 80% of those, are early colleges. About 9% of those are middle colleges, and then about 11% are others. And so innovative institutions that were put together really in the early days of cooperative innovative high schools. The statistics that are the most recent available are from 2017, 2018. In that year, there were 26,000, just over 26,000 cooperative innovative high school students. From those cooperative innovative high schools, 5,581 students graduated, and of that 5,581, 5,380 were admitted to the UNC system of four-year institutions, which would include institutions like East Carolina, Western Carolina, UNC Chapel Hill, UNC Wilmington, et cetera. 2,856 graduated with an associate's degree, just over 1,100 graduated with CTE credentials. The data show that the retention and high school completion rates are above the state average for cooperative innovative high schools across the state, and the dropout rates are below state average. In looking at Mast specifically, on this chart or on this graphic, you'll see two pie charts. The larger pie chart represents the current enrollment of Mast, and this is broken down by the three traditional high school feeder patterns. And so you'll see that the red represents West Carteret, the gold color there is Croatan High School, and then the blue is East Carteret. On the current enrollment of Mast, 30% of our students come from the East Carteret High School attendance area, 46% from West, and 23% from Croatan. The smaller pie chart is looking at the actual student population of high school students in Carteret County. And so when we look at those three schools together, East Carteret represents 22% of our high school population pulling out the current Mast students. West Carteret represents 43% of our current high school population, and Croatan High School represents 35% of our current high school population. Currently, at Mast Early College High School, we have 94 students. As I recall, we've had nine students who've enrolled this year, 16 have withdrawn this year, and so we've continued to try to recruit students to the school. We've had some success with that. We have had some students who've moved out of the area. We've seen that across the school district as families are dealing with the challenges of the pandemic. We have five teachers. We started the year with four. We were able to add a fifth teacher for second semester. Very delighted to add another fine teacher to the Mast faculty. We have a guidance counselor, a principal, and a data manager, who's really kind of the jack of all trades, who also takes care of the financing and the welcoming, so the receptionist slash data manager slash bookkeeper slash anything that Mr. Johnson needs her to do, and does that in a great job. Looking at the successes we've had at Mast, so far to date, since Mast opened, the students there have taken 129 CTE courses. CTE stands for Career and Technical Education. They've taken 532 university transfer courses. We're absolutely excited that we've had students who've earned community college certificates, drawn in marine propulsion, three in welding, and five in aquaculture. In fact, Dr. Mancini was just sharing with me that we're going to have some more announcements very soon, with some students who are having great success, and so we're looking forward to that as well. Moving on to the history of Mast, just to real briefly update the board on where we are in terms of where we started from. In February of 2018, the Mast application from the school system in Carteret Community College was approved by the North Carolina Community College Board. In December of 2017, or just before, the State Board of Education approved that application. Then on March 23rd of 2018, the Board of Education approved the opening of Mast. In June of that year, Mast was approved by the General Assembly, but at that time, unexpected by the school system, no funds were allocated for the opening of Mast at the state level. August of 2018, Mast opened with a ninth grade with approximately 50 students in the cohort. August of 2019, another students were added, bringing roughly 100 students to the campus. Excuse me. Then on June 2nd of 2020, the Board of Education made the decision not to enroll a ninth-grade class for this current school year. At that time, there was no expectation necessarily of state funding for the school in terms of cooperative innovative high school funding, because it hadn't been received to date. No expectation for the allocation of the funding for the principal, and so the Board made that decision. And so at this time, we currently have a 10th and 11th grade class at Mast. In looking at the finances, and certainly that's been a part of the conversation as we've gone along, looking just at the expenses in this moment on this slide, year one was 2018, 2019. Salary and benefits, as you would imagine, is the greatest portion of the expenses for any school. Our people are our greatest resource, and so certainly having them is absolutely crucial to success. In that first year, we had a principal position, we had two teachers on campus, we had a full-time counselor, but half of that salary was covered by the community college. We certainly appreciate that. We had a halftime clerical person, and then we had a social worker who was there one day a week representing .2 of that social worker's salary and benefits. And then we had some textbooks. In that very first year, there was $1,000 in fees. We've not had to pay fees since, and we appreciate that. And so our total expenses year one was $301,494. In year two, 2019, 2020, we increased to four teachers. We still had the principal, the counselor was still full-time, but the school system picked up the entirety of those salary and benefits. The clerical person became full-time, and then, of course, we still had that .2 social worker. And so the expenses went up as the salaries went up and positions were added. Textbooks remained at $10,000. There were no fees, and so the total expense that year was $501,930. Year three, which is this current year, we have a principal, we have five teachers, adding the fifth just at the start of the second semester, a full-time counselor, the clerical position, and then .2 social workers, which is a total expense and salary and benefits of $565,346, and then the textbook fees of $10,000, giving a total expense of $575,346. Looking at our funding, the funding has, I'm sure, been frustrating in that there's not been a consistent stream of funding as the state has gone through various things. But looking on this chart, simply at funding, so this isn't a budget, this is just looking at the funding expected or requested versus that received. And so as we start in that first column, year one, 2018, 2019, we expected, as a school system, $180,000 from the state in cooperative innovative high school funding. That was not received. That's that first yellow cell there that's marked zero, so we did not receive that $180,000. The state principal's salary, and that includes salary and benefits, was expected $105,000 and was received. We certainly appreciate that. The county commissioners, we were requested from them, and they provided for the school system for Mast, $186,358. We certainly appreciate their partnership and all that they do for our school system. And then from our state textbook funds, we were able to pull the $10,000 that we were spending there. And so we expected year one, $181,358, and received $301,358, so $180,000 less than expected in year one. In year two, going into the 2019, 2020 school year, we expected again the $180,000 of the state cooperative innovative high school funding and did not receive that as well. And so that's that second yellow cell that has the zero. We did not expect the state principal's salary, so the rules or the way that the cooperative innovative high schools are funded is that the principal position is funded the first year, and then when the school achieves 100 students in population, it's funded ongoing. And so the second year with 50 students in that first class, we did not expect the state to fund it, and consequently, they didn't fund it, and so that's not yellow because we didn't expect it. Local funding, we asked for an increase from the commissioners to $245,958, and they generously provided that. Then state textbook funds of $10,000 took care of that expense as well, and so we expected We received $255,958, again for a difference of less, or $180,000 that we did not receive. Going into year three, in year two, the previous president of the Carteret Community College had shared that the college would provide the $180,000 if it was not received from the state. It wasn't received from the state, and the college did provide during this school year the $180,000 that went towards year two. And so that's not reflected on the chart, other than we've got it there at the bottom, because I did want to acknowledge and thank the college for that contribution. We very much appreciate that, and so thank you very much for that. In year three, which is this current year, it gets very interesting. The state cooperative innovative high school funding, we expected $180,000. Now, it's interesting to say that we expected, because the previous two years, we didn't get it. So I don't know if we really expected it. We would perhaps do it, but we weren't necessarily expecting it, because it hadn't been received for two years. Instead, though, we were a bit surprised or delighted, perhaps, to receive $200,000. And in working with the Department of Public Instruction, we understand that the cooperative innovative high school funding this year and beyond will be $200,000 if it's allocated by the General Assembly. And so that number changed from $180,000 to $200,000. As we understand, it's because the year of the application, we were a Tier Two county, and so the $200,000 is the appropriate amount, and so we did receive that. We were very surprised to receive funding for the principal position. As I shared, the principal position is funded the first year of a cooperative innovative high school or after you have 100 students in population. Neither of those was true. However, we received the funding, and so our finance officer, Ms. Carswell, made multiple phone calls to Department of Public Instruction and reaching out to them to make sure they really meant to send it to us. And what we heard back was that they considered this year one, because it was the first year that Mast was actually funded. And so they were funding the principal, because it was quote-unquote "year one," even though it was year three. And so we said, "Thank you," and moved forward. In local funding, we had requested an increase to $339,713. The county commissioners level funded that line item, so it remained at $245,958. The state textbook funds of $10,000 were used to meet that expense, and so at the end of this year, we have a difference of positive $26,692, primarily because we received that principal funding that we weren't expecting, and also received more in the state cooperative innovative high school funding.
Jackson, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Can I ask a couple of questions right here?
Please.
The, just for point of clarification, the $200,000 was received after we had voted to suspend the freshman class. It was within a couple of weeks. But also, and I'm asking this, the funding, the bill that we got the funding from originally had stated it would be recurring funding. If I'm not mistaken, the final version, they changed the wording, and maybe it was a Senate bill that said it was non-recurring. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Did you recall the bill?
I don't.
Yeah, that's fine, yeah. Just for clarity.
And thank you for asking that question, because that is very important. So Mast and the schools that were approved at that time became the first cooperative innovative high schools that weren't funded when they were approved. And so the school system could not have known that was going to happen based on precedent, and then again, for two years, was not funded. I should have said, and I appreciate the clarification, that when that funding was received, the funding was in the budget, the final budget, that went through as non-recurring dollars. And for those who may not know, that means simply that you can't expect the dollars to appear in the next year's budget unless they are placed back into the budget. The difference is with recurring dollars, you can expect them to continue in the budget unless they're taken out of the budget. And so you're exactly right. That was non-recurring dollars, and the dollars that came in, actually, I think it was more than a couple of weeks. As I recall, Ms. Carswell, that was almost as we're getting closer to the start of the school year, and I apologize for being fuzzy on the date of the receipt of those funds, but we were very surprised, and it was post, because it was, I was here. The decision not to enroll a freshman class was June 2nd, I believe. I didn't arrive until July 1st, and so it was after I arrived that we actually received those funds. So thank you for that question.
So, Dr. Jackson, do we know yet about year four and onward with those two green cells?
Thank you very much. And so going forward, for year four, and we'll certainly talk about that as we go forward, the Department of Public Instruction has requested funding for the cooperative innovative high schools, which includes Mast. For Mast, they've requested funding for $200,000. There's literally no person in the state of North Carolina who can say whether or not that funding will show up, because for that funding to show up, it has to go through the state budget process. And as we've seen in the last couple of years, that's not even a given that we're going to have an approved state budget at the end of the year. The Department of Public Instruction has requested the funding. It has to go through the General Assembly, survive that process, go to the governor, survive that process, and act- and actually be a part of the approved budget bill before that funding shows up. So at this moment, I can tell you that the Department of Public Instruction has requested two hundred thousand dollars in funding for MAST, um, but whether or not that shows up, you know, that, that literally no one can say because there are so many people involved in that decision-making.
And, and regarding the state principal salary?
Thank you. The state principal salary, again, is based on first-year funding and so obviously we will not qualify for that or having one hundred students in membership. As I shared, we currently have ninety-four students in membership, so we did not meet that threshold despite incredible efforts, um, to recruit students to the school. And so for next year, we do not anticipate funding for the principal salary based on our current enrollment. Going forward beyond next year, if the, uh, population grows beyond one hundred, then we could come to expect it if the population gets to that level.
Thank you.
And Dr. Jackson, just to highlight the confusion of all the funding, will you please explain one more time why we receive cluster funding this year?
Yes, sir. I'll, I'll do my very best because as I shared, we were surprised when we received funding. And so the way the cooperative innovative high schools work, you receive funding for the principal salary the very first year that an early college opens, and we did receive that. However, DPI made the determination that because this was the first year MAST was funded, that under that, they would fund the principal as if it were the first year. And that's the reason that our finance officer made so many contacts to DPI because it didn't seem to, we were glad and, and happy, uh, but it didn't seem to make sense. And what I didn't want to happen was that then somebody figured out an error had been made and then we receive a bill at the end of the year for this money that we shouldn't have received. However, after multiple contacts to DPI, we did receive it and the reason we were given is because it was the first year that MAST was funded. Excellent. And thank you for those questions and please continue to ask questions as we go forward. And so we've talked about what we expected and what we received, we've talked about expenses, and so when we begin to put that together, the expenses and the revenue, and then look at years one, two, and three, in year one, you'll see that the expenses, as I shared earlier, were three hundred one thousand four hundred ninety-four dollars. The revenue or the money that came in was three hundred one thousand three hundred fifty-eight dollars, so there's a difference of one hundred thirty-six dollars, almost a wash there. In year two, two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, the expenses totaled five hundred one thousand nine hundred, excuse me, thirty dollars. As you'll recall, there's that change in expenses, the increase in expenses was adding teachers, adding the second half of the counselor position and not having funding for the principal position from the state. The revenue that year was two hundred fifty-five thousand nine hundred fifty-eight dollars for a difference of two hundred forty-five thousand nine hundred seventy-two dollars. And here also notated that in the fall of this year, we received the one hundred eighty thousand dollars from Cartwright Community College. Again, very appreciative of that. And so if we were to apply that retroactively to year two, the difference would be sixty-five thousand nine hundred seventy-two dollars, um, less than, than we needed to cover expenses. In year three, this current year, our expenses totaled five hundred seventy-five thousand three hundred forty-six dollars. Again, we've added a teacher position this year and increase in salary and benefits. The revenue was five hundred fifty-six thousand four hundred five dollars for a difference of eighteen thousand nine hundred forty-one dollars. And so moving forward into, um, towards the proposals of the day, I want to share with you feedback from the parent advisory council. Certainly, the board received a lot of feedback. When the study was conducted, I had the opportunity to join the parent advisory council. They were meeting virtually as each of our pack, uh, from each of our schools meet routinely and regularly and I very much appreciated it. I asked the parents in that meeting to share with me their experience with MAST and then to try to do, uh, the best job I could to capture what they were sharing with me and very much appreciated the passion with which they were sharing with me. And so I want to share, um, a couple of brief quotes with you from some of the parents who were present in the parent advisory council who shared with me. One parent said, "MAST has allowed this parent student to earn a welding certificate and get a good job. The school," she said, "literally saved his life as he would have dropped out of school. His confidence has shot up." Another parent says, "MAST has the ability to have local programs with local businesses. There are a lot of options in our community for MAST students. Our county is anticipating major growth and needs the skills of MAST graduates." Another parent said, "MAST opened up a whole new world. Most MAST students are using the MAST program to stay here." Talking about Cartwright County, "It's a great way to build our community." Further, a parent said, "The small school is advantageous. There's more attention for individual students than at a large school. MAST is a huge benefit to the county. Early college high school models, such as the one held by MAST, have demonstrated over and over statewide and nationally positive impacts on graduation rates and post-secondary training." Another parent said, "The MAST family involvement has helped my child thrive." And finally, another parent said, "My child loves working on things. Today, he was conducting sea trials on two boat motors he rebuilt. He has thrived at MAST." I really enjoyed the entire conversation, particularly the conversation around sea trials on boat motors because I didn't know that was a thing. But I learned about that and to see the pride in that parent's eyes as she was talking about her son conducting sea trials was quite delightful for me. To prepare for the proposals, to set the boundaries for the proposals, I've pulled out three guiding documents. So all the proposals you'll hear today meet the requirements and guidelines in three, these three guiding documents. So I want to spend some time going through these three guiding documents because I do believe that they are those documents that'll help move forward with, with MAST. The first is the state statute, statute one fifteen C dash two thirty-eight dot five through, I believe, dot five five. The second is the actual MAST application, and in fact, there were two applications. There was a draft application that was not submitted and then the actual application that was submitted. And then finally, the Board of Education resolution of July two thousand nineteen. And so we'll use each of those documents to guide our work going forward. Starting with the state statute, cooperative innovative high schools were initially provided for in session law two thousand three dash two seventy-seven and began operation, I believe, in two thousand four. They were updated with the establishment of the Career and College Promise Program in two thousand eleven. The Career and College Promise Program, in great ways, opened up access to community college classes to our high school students in a way they previously hadn't been. And so when that program, the Career and College Promise Program, came into being, cooperative innovative high schools were folded into that program and are now one of the three programs in Career and College Promise. All Career and College Promise high schools partner with the Institution of Higher Education, forcing the, the instance of MAST, that's Cartwright Community College. Most are held on college campuses with some exceptions, and MAST certainly is that. The, uh, MAST program has just an absolutely beautiful, um, part of the campus and we very much appreciate that. I've joked that I would have a hard time paying attention in some of those classrooms because the view is so beautiful. Most are held on college campuses, as I shared, all offer students the opportunity to earn a high school diploma while also earning an associate's degree certificate or vocational credentials. The Cooperative Innovative High School Program statute states that cooperative innovative high schools may target any or all of the following student groups. One, high school students at risk for dropping out of school before obtaining a high school diploma. A second group that may be targeted or may not be targeted is high school students with parents who did not continue education beyond high school. The third, high school students who would benefit from an accelerated academic instruction. We did do some research with the Department of Public Instruction, school systems, and their partners have the opportunity to change the target groups as they go along. And so we're aware of that process. Moving to the MAST application is our second guiding document. Again, on the timeline, it was approved for filing in September, uh, two thousand seventeen. It was actually signed by officials of Cartwright County Public Schools and Cartwright Community College on September seventh, two thousand seventeen, approved by the State Board of Education in December of two thousand seventeen and approved by the North Carolina Community College Board on February sixteenth, two thousand eighteen. So I want to share with you a couple of quotes from the application to give you a feel for, um, the information stated there. So in the application, it said, "Cartwright County Public Schools and Cartwright Community College will partner to open MAST, offering associate's degrees in arts, the OA degree in science, the AS degree in the applied sciences in aquaculture technology." It also said, "Students can pursue diplomas or certificates in composite boat manufacturing, marine services and marine propulsion systems, and Yamaha and ABYC industry certifications." In the application, it says that "Cartwright's maritime heritage and the college's programs and waterfront location uniquely support MAST, which would provide essential training and education to serve local aquaculture, commercial fishing, and boat manufacturing service employers." It says, "These industries, which represent a large portion of existing and potential county economy, face hiring challenges due to an underqualified workforce." In the application, it says that "MAST will target all of the following groups: high school students at risk for dropping out of school, high school students with parents who did not continue education beyond high school, and high school students who would benefit from an accelerated academic instruction." The application went on to say that "MAST will offer career and technical education programs, college transfer programs," and then asked for the projected enrollment. And so this chart comes right from the application and you'll see year one, which is two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, the number was fifty, and then that added in year two, they're fifty for the grade nine, it's the first group matriculated to grade ten, and each year after that, fifty students. Year five, which is considered grade thirteen, there's fifty there as a placeholder. That's typical for cooperative innovative high schools, essentially those students who may need a fifth year to finish their college work, have that opportunity. We certainly wouldn't expect that every student at MAST would take five years. In fact, fewer, very few, I think, would actually be there in their fifth year, but certainly that's an opportunity they would have under the application as written. "The school's rigorous curriculum will develop individual talent and prepare students for successful transition to jobs in a broad range of marine industries and related fields or to post-secondary institutions to pursue bachelor's degrees and beyond, particularly in areas focused on marine science and technology." And I apologize for reading to you from this slide, but wanted to give you the actual language in the application. "Every student will earn a high school diploma while pursuing an associate's degree and/or two years of transferable college credit during the five-year program." The application goes on to say, "The goal of MAST is to increase the number of students with access to marine sciences and services education and thereby increase their ability to pursue post-secondary marine sciences education or work at one of the county's many maritime centers, marine manufacturers, or service providers. The addition of an early college will allow students with specific interest in the maritime and marine industries to attain both a high school diploma and the skill certifications and/or degrees necessary to graduate and contribute to the county in which they live." Finally, the third document that I want to share with you as a guiding document for this work is the Board of Education resolution that was adopted by this board and by your predecessors on the board on July twenty-ninth, two thousand nineteen. The Board of Education resolution was titled, "Cartwright County Board of Education Resolution Approving the Opening of Marine Science and Technologies, MAST, Early College High School on Schedule." In that resolution, there was some language directing the work of opening the school that summer. And so moving on from that, in the resolution, I did take from the resolution this language as guidance from the Board of Education to develop the proposals you'll hear today. Before enrolling students for the two thousand twenty, twenty, twenty-one school year, the superintendent will, and so shall, review their application and selection process to ensure that the program's adequately recruiting and admitting students in the categories of at-risk and first-generation college students and who upon completion of their high school and community college degrees have the vocational education and training needed to serve local aquaculture, commercial fishing, boat manufacturing and service, and other maritime-based employers. It says, "Before enrolling students, the superintendent will review the impact on East Cartwright High School or any other traditional high school of the loss of student enrollment and any potential loss of high-achieving students to MAST." Further, it says, "The superintendent will ensure the recruitment and admission of students who will likely choose vocational training, such that upon receiving their high school and community college degrees, they can enter the Cartwright County workforce in skilled maritime positions." And finally, it says that "The superintendent will reduce or eliminate any adverse impacts of MAST on East Cartwright High School or any other traditional high school." And so having worked now through the three guiding documents, I do want to pause as we move forward to actually dive into the proposals, where, to share this special note. One of the things that's incredibly important to me and I know to each of you, having had conversations with you, is ensuring that the students who are currently at MAST continue to be well-served as they would be anywhere, but be able to have the opportunity to continue to be served in place at MAST through the time of their graduation year. And so certainly that stands as a recommendation regardless of the proposal or the, the, um, way forward as we move forward with MAST. And so I do appreciate the commitment that I've heard individually for our current students and I certainly, um, share that with you as a recommendation. And so forward into the proposals. Proposals in the proposal process are titled sailing forward. Each of the proposals you'll hear proposes a way forward for MAST into the future. Every proposal proposes a way forward into the future for MAST. Certainly, MAST has had a, a bit of a rocky start to the voyage, but we look forward to moving forward in a very positive way. And so proposal one, the start of this proposal, and you'll see this on multiple proposals, is that first, the MAST application be revised. The revision process is simple in terms of the actual process, but the application be revised through DPI. There's a form online that the school system takes care of and essentially we would revise it in this way. First of all, the, the application would be revised to reflect the two student groups that were identified in the Board of Education resolution of July two thousand nineteen. Those two student groups being high school students at risk of dropping out of school before obtaining their high school diploma and those high school students with parents who did not continue education beyond high school. There's been quite a bit of conversation about what that second bullet actually means in terms of, does that mean going to a four-year university? Does that mean going anywhere? And so to define that, I've used the U.S. Department of Education definition of a first-generation college student. It says that that first-generation college student is a student from a family in which neither parent, whether natural or adoptive, received a baccalaureate degree or a student who, prior to the age of eighteen, regularly resided with and received support from only one natural or adoptive parent and whose supporting parent did not receive a baccalaureate degree. And so with that definition, the application would be revised to reflect those two groups that were identified in the July two thousand nineteen resolution. The, continuing with the first proposal and in working with, with the college and working with the faculty, we've identified five program pathways that also meet the guidelines of the application in terms of the focus of the school and the resolution of July two thousand nineteen. Those pathways come under the heading of MAST will promote program pathways to serve local aquaculture, commercial fishing, boat manufacturing service, and other maritime-based employers in Cartwright County. The first is aquaculture, we're certainly seeing great success in that program. The second is the marine trades, which include things like propulsion and boat service and manufacturing. The third is welding, we've had students who've earned their welding certificates. The fourth is auto and diesel, and the fifth is hospitality and culinary. Of that list, the hospitality culinary may seem a bit out of place, um, kind of the old children's program, one of these things is not like the other. However, in working through that, particularly working with Dr. Manzini, the hospitality and culinary area is a growing area, particularly in our area. Not only the number of seafood restaurants we have, and when you have aquaculture, the purpose is to create seafood that needs to be prepared so that it, uh, the folks who visit the county can actually enjoy that. There, of course, is a beautiful culinary building and we're looking forward to our tour of that new culinary building and so that's exciting. But the college is also working with the Coast Guard where there's a great need for those in this industry to be able to serve in the Coast Guard. And so there is a connection there to the maritime-based trades and so we've included that as one of the five pathways.
Dr. Jackson, I'm sorry to keep you.
Oh, please.
Would you rather us hold our questions to there or do you mind if we jump in?
I'm delighted to answer questions as we go.
So regarding the focus groups, um, we would drop the third brief off the application. Are we, and we have had struggles, uh, getting to the right applicants, and that could be a reflection of some of our decisions, so I get that. But is it realistic to think that we would have enough applicants by dropping that third category coming out of eighth grade to fill these classes?
That's a great question and it, the, the best answer is probably time will tell. Um, I never go into something thinking we're not going to do a great job and succeed in it, and so I would never say that we wouldn't be able to do something. It will be a challenge. I have four children, as you know, and in eighth grade, I don't know if any of them could have told me exactly what they would be doing with their life. And so that is a, a bit of a challenge. One of the challenges, and we'll talk about that as we move forward into the proposal, is that with this proposal and with any proposal, we will need to do a great job of robust communication with sharing with parents and students the opportunities that are being presented and, and sharing our commitment so that... presented and sharing our commitment so that a parent who may choose to be a part of MAST doesn't worry about, will MAST continue to be there? And so making that commitment is very important as part of that communication so that when we do share with parents and students the opportunity, they feel good about that opportunity continuing to be there. But it is going to be a challenge, and I wouldn't want to undersell that. There is a challenge there in terms of ensuring that enough students would want to participate in these five program pathways. And so one of the things that you'll see in this proposal, and I'll move forward to the actual proposal, and then be happy to continue to answer any questions you may have, but the actual proposal one is to enroll a ninth and 10th grade for entry to MAST for the 2021-2022 school year. You remember from the application, the application listed 50 students per grade, and so under Proposal 1, that 50 students would continue as a maximum, but we would set a minimum of 35. Part of that is ensuring that the finances work, and you've seen the finances haven't worked yet, but we're looking forward to getting onto level ground there. However, having that minimum of 35 allows for, if we move forward with Proposal 1 and we identify 37 students, then we're moving forward. We don't have to come back to the board and say, "We found 37, but not 50." What would the board like to do? And setting a basement and a ceiling is very helpful in terms of the process. And so there is a challenge there, but regardless of the path forward that the board sets, the men and women of our school system are going to do everything we can to make it a success because we owe that to our children and to our community. Okay, moving forward with Proposal 1, as part of Proposal 1, for the application process, the application would be developed as required by that July 2019 resolution or revised for the incoming year. Students would declare one of those five approved pathways, so they would choose to be a part of one of those five pathways. They would meet the selection criteria in that they would be either at-risk or a first-generation college student. The accepted cohorts would be, will be proportionately reflective of the school size of the traditional high schools. And so that language was in the resolution twice, and so we would certainly ensure that that cohort met that in terms of proportionally reflective. And then that final note that we just talked about, that robust communication with potential students and parents will be extremely important. In terms of the budget for Proposal 1, looking at this current year, which is the column on the left, and next year, 2021-2022, you'll notice that for this current year, again, this is a review of what we saw earlier, our expenses were $575,346, and the receipts were $556,405. There's a difference of $18,000. The expenses grow significantly for next year in that to fully equip the school with four grade levels, we'd need to add two more teachers, and so there's an expense to that. However, as the ADM, or average daily membership of the school, increases, and state funding or ADM funding becomes available, and so there would be some offset there, and so the difference would be $245,972. Now, while I was in school, I was taught, and certainly by my parents, to never assume anything. So that's not a good practice, and I understand that. But I do want to make clear that these numbers assume a couple of things. They assume that that state funding of $200,000 that was asked about earlier actually comes in. If that funding doesn't come in, then certainly, that would be less revenue, which would increase the difference there. It also assumes level funding from our commissioners. And so those two things we're assuming would happen, which would benefit, of course, the revenue side. It's also assuming the loss of the principal funding because we wouldn't have 100 students. It's based on the previous year. This year, we have 94, and so we're assuming that loss. And I state that because we thought we weren't going to get it last year, and surprise, we got it. And so I just wanted to say, we're assuming it's not going to happen. Now, if it showed up, we'd be delighted by that as well. And so that's what our funding with Proposal 1 would look like. I'd like to offer also a Proposal 1A. Yes, sir.
I'm so sorry, because I see it on this one too, but would you just please quickly address the phrase minimum of 35? If we have 34, what does that look like?
If we had 34 qualified applicants, at that point, in order to move forward, I would need to come to the Board of Education and the board to approve a waiver to what the board would be stating in terms of that minimum of 35. If, as we went through the application process, it looked like we were at 34, we'd be beating the drums and pounding the cymbals and doing anything we could to get 35. But if we wound up with 34, we have not met that minimum, and so to be able to go forward with enrolling a class, we would have to come back to the Board of Education to either ask for a waiver of that minimum that we've set, knowing that there would be some financial implications because our ADM wouldn't quite work, or to not enroll a class that year.
And the 35 was the minimum financially for it to make sense, so it obviously would be a kick in the lower.
That's exactly right. That's exactly right.
Sorry.
Yes, sir. And Dr. Jackson, you mentioned the ADM. That assumes additional students coming into our county. If we're transferring students from one school to another school, there's not a difference in ADM. Is that correct? Can you explain a little bit further on that?
Sure. So in terms of the allocation of teachers, teachers are allocated to the school system, not to specific schools, based on our average daily membership. And so once we receive this allocation of teachers to the school system, then we allocate through our Human Resources Department, Mr. Probst, those teacher positions to the schools to be able to serve our children. And so to date, we have not had, and so let me back up a bit. When there's an increase in one school significant enough to merit another position, that position would be sent to that school. If there's a decrease, a corresponding decrease at another school, then the position, not necessarily the person, can be moved from one school to another. However, if there's an increase but no decrease, then we need additional funding either from the state or locally to actually fund that position. And so when we talk about ADM funding for MAST, if MAST under Proposal 1 had a full complement of four grade levels, then it may be that there was enough of an ADM decrease at one or more of the traditional high schools that we would be able to pull a position, not necessarily a person, but a position to MAST, which would be that funding. When there's not an associated decrease, then that funding becomes locally supported through funds we receive locally.
But someone choosing to go to MAST over East Cardiff transfer, that's not going to end up changing our countywide ADM?
It doesn't change the countywide ADM, and it also is a bit complicated in that a high school student in a traditional high school under a block schedule has four teachers. But one student doesn't generate four teachers. And so it's really a block of students that's generating a teacher. And so to date, we haven't had a block of students significant for many of the schools to actually pull a position back from a traditional high school. And so that's a bit of the in-the-weeds piece, and certainly be happy to go deep into that, but that's a bit of the complication in terms of looking at the ADM of the entire school system population, the ADM of individual schools, and then allocating those positions, understanding that kids don't come in nice, neat blocks, in terms of blocks of students. And so we do have to supplement that state funding with local funding, and we appreciate the county commissioners helping us with that. Thank you. All right, thank you. And so Proposal 1A, which is a slight difference on Proposal 1, the difference here, Proposal 1A would simply enroll a ninth-grade class, so under Proposal 1A, we would not enroll both ninth grade and 10th grade. We would simply enroll a ninth-grade class to begin their educational journey, academic journey, at MAST as ninth graders. The rest of the proposal is identical to Proposal 1. The students would declare in one of those five approved pathways. They would meet that selection criteria. The cohorts would be proportionally reflective of the makeup of our traditional high schools in terms of numbers, and there would be robust communication with potential students and parents. The budget does change there. As we look at the budget for Proposal 1A, of course, year three this current year remains the same, but under 1A, the expenses drop to $623,676 because we would be able to serve those three classes with our current faculty. As the students in the early college matriculate through the grades, they're taking more and more college classes, which allows our high school's teachers to pick up more classes. And so if we add ninth grade, we'd be able to do that with the current faculty size. The revenue is $475,958, and so the difference there is $147,718. And it's important to continue, and I don't want to beat a dead horse at all, but to continue to state that all of this, in terms of our budgetary numbers here, is predicated on an assumption that we would receive that $200,000 in cooperative innovative high school funding, and then level funding from the county commissioners, and that we would lose the funding for the principals. And so I do want to continue to make that point.
Dr. Jackson, I don't understand. 1A is the only advantage reducing the cost?
So potentially, yes. In terms of, the big difference is 1 is enroll ninth and 10th grade, and 1A is enroll ninth grade. Logistically, we believe we can make both work and succeed with both. Enrolling one class instead of two classes might be a little easier logistically, but to give the board as many options as possible, I wanted to make sure that you had that Proposal 1A as well as 1, and so that certainly is an option. But financially, it is easier perhaps in that we would not have to increase the faculty next year, faculty size. Should the board like to move forward with MAST using Proposal 1 or 1A? The next steps would be certainly that robust communication and recruitment of students that would get started right away, as students and families are beginning to imagine life post-pandemic, which makes me excited to say out loud, life post-pandemic. We would submit the update form to change our school focus and target student population. And then if we do move forward with Proposal 1, we'd be adding those two grade levels, so we'd need to find two additional teachers in those two additional teaching positions. And again, if we move forward with Proposal 1A, there'd be no additional staff needed for MAST. And so before we move forward to Proposal 2, I'd like to pause and see if there's any questions from the board about the first proposal or Proposal 1A.
Dr. Jones.
Yes, sir.
In Proposal 1, I just want to make sure that I'm clear.
Yes, sir.
There is no allowance for early college for those who would go to MAST under early college without any of the other five FOSI.
Thank you for the question. So MAST would continue as an early college. As an early college entity, an early college can target any or all of those three student groups. And so under Proposal 1 and 1A as directed by that July 2019 Board of Education resolution, we would not focus on that third group, which is that accelerated group, but we would continue to focus on the at-risk students and those whose parents did not move on beyond high school as defined by the Department of Education.
Got it.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I don't know if it's appropriate for me to do this right now, but I want to give my knee-jerk reactions to 1 and 1A. Certainly, the pros are, you know, we're affecting positively young people's lives. And I know one of the students who's been wildly successful in working, and there's not a better feeling. So we can move them forward. The challenges I see potentially, and I'm not looking for responses, the challenges I see would be the applicant pool from eighth grade, not as much of a vocational focus, which I think unanimously the board, county commissioners, business advisory council are interested in, and then still funding, whether it be local or going back to the county commissioner of asking for more local funding and also the state funding. So I just wanted to mention that before we move forward.
Okay. All right, thank you very much. And so we'll move forward, again sailing forward with MAST under a second proposal. Proposal 2, it's a bit interesting. It starts the same way that Proposal 1 starts, in that it starts with the application being revised to focus on those two groups, again, as directed by that July 2019 resolution. So the two groups being those high school students at risk of dropping out of school or those high school students whose parents did not continue education beyond high school. The same five pathways exist. Again, those pathways as called for by the resolution and the application, pathways of aquaculture, marine trades, welding, auto diesel, and hospitality and culinary. In terms of Proposal 2, though, Proposal 2 is that the school system would submit a request to the State Board of Education to transition MAST from an early college to a middle college. The difference between an early college and a middle college is that an early college serves students in grades nine, 10, 11, and 12, and there's the possible 13th grade if they need to continue. A middle college serves students in 11th and 12th grade, and then that possible 13th grade. One of the things that, and I'm excited about all three proposals, but one of the things that I appreciate in this proposal is that, to the earlier point, a student who's approaching 11th grade may be more prepared to make a decision about life beyond high school than a student who's exiting eighth grade. And so as a middle college serving grades 11 and 12, and then the potential for 13, you'd have that opportunity where students have been in high school for a couple of years and are ready to make a decision about whether this is the school for them. And so under this proposal, we'd submit that request to the State Board of Education to transition MAST from an early college to a middle college. We would enroll additional 11th and 12th graders in MAST for this coming-up school year to a maximum of 50 students per grade level. The current students will be matriculating from 10th and 11th grade to 11th and 12th grade. So next year, we would have 11th and 12th graders at MAST, and we would simply be recruiting to build out those cohorts. The students, one caveat under a middle college, is that the students transfer after 10th grade and upon meeting the required courses for promotion to 11th grade. So in addition to those application pieces that we've talked about a couple of times, the student would have to be promoted to 11th grade to apply to attend a MAST middle college, if that's the direction the board would like to move forward. Again, under this, they would declare one of those five pathways that we've talked about. They would meet that selection criteria that we've talked about. The accepted cohorts would continue to be or would be proportionally reflective of the school size of the three traditional schools, and we would continue and need robust communication with potential students and parents. One of the things that's important, though, I mentioned that making those changes to the application is a rather simplistic process, and we've been led to expect pretty automatic approval in terms of the changes I've talked about to the application. However, under this, there's actually a more robust process, and so there's an application process that we would need to go through. That process, after submitting the request to change that application, we'd still need to do that, we would submit a request to DPI to seek approval to change the early college from an early college to a middle college. To do that, we would basically be going back through the same process we went through to actually be approved for an early college when we first submitted that application. And so that application is submitted to and reviewed by the Joint Advisory Committee. That Joint Advisory Committee consists of representatives from DPI, which again is the Department of Public Instruction, the North Carolina Community College System, the UNC Governors Association, and then North Carolina Independent Universities and Colleges. The Joint Advisory Committee recommends qualified submissions to the State Board of Education and the Local Institution of Higher Education Governing Board for approval. And so if we move forward with this proposal, we submit our application to the JAC, the Joint Advisory Committee. If they approve that application, it would go to the North Carolina State Board of Education, who we would hope would approve it, and then it would go to the Board of Community Colleges at the state level for their approval as well. We have been told that it has been many years since the Joint Advisory Committee has recommended to the State Board of Education approval of an application to open a middle college. And one of the reasons the DPI staff member shared with us may be that eligible juniors and seniors can already access dual enrollment through the Career in College Program, Career in College Promise Program. And so at this time, students in high schools across the state can take those classes, so it may be a system would not necessarily apply to open a middle college because 11th and 12th graders can already do that. In our case, we have a cooperative innovative high school, and so we'd be requesting to change it from an early college to a middle college. It's not something that they've taken up before, so it'd be new and innovative, but certainly something that- so it'd be new and innovative, but certainly something that would be on the table for the board to consider in terms of a way forward. When we look at the finances for proposal two, this slide will look very similar to the slide you just saw with proposal one A. Essentially, nothing changes in terms of the size of the faculty. And so our expenses and revenue would be the same. Again, the difference, one hundred forty-seven thousand seven hundred eighteen dollars. And again, we're assuming that that two hundred thousand dollars in cooperative innovative state funding would come through, through all the budget process at the state level. We're assuming that we would continue to receive that funding from the Carteret County Commissioners, and we're assuming that we would not receive funding for the principal position. For proposal two, next steps would be, first, to submit the update form. That's the online form that we click-click through to change the school focus and target student populations. Of course, that's a part of all of the proposals. Then we'd work with the Department of Public Instruction on the application process to change from an early college to a middle college. And again, would not need any additional staffing for the faculty because we would be prepared to go forward. And so before moving to proposal three, I'd like to pause and ask for any questions or any feedback the board may want to share at this time for proposal two. Okay. Finally, proposal three, which is our final proposal for the board this morning. Proposal three recognizes the value that MAST has brought to the county and seeks to share that value across the county. And so proposal three states, following the graduation of our current MAST students from MAST, we would transition the school to a countywide program with the same goals, utilizing bus transportation to transport students to Carteret Community College for college courses. As the board knows in our current budget request for this year, we are adding bus service from each of our traditional high schools to the community college on a daily basis, which we're very excited about. So our students across the county will have the opportunity to access community college courses. We're delighted to continue our partnership and grow our partnership with the community college. In this case, for proposal three, MAST would transition. So we would still be working with those same five program pathways. We would still be doing our very best to capture everything that's been so amazing about MAST, and then allow that to be spread across the county so that students throughout the county could access that. And so proposal three is also a way forward for MAST. There is one caveat and a difference that I do want to pause and share. In a cooperative innovative high school, if a student is accepted into a cooperative innovative high school through the application process, that student can, as a ninth grader, begin to take community college courses right away. A student in a traditional high school can take classes in ninth and tenth grade if they meet the state criteria. And so that's a difference. If they're accepted into the early college, they can begin to take the community college courses. If they're in a traditional school, they have to meet the criteria. And so I've listed the criteria here for those in the career and technical education fields, which is the area that MAST is focused on. And so for a ninth or tenth grader, starting with a ninth grader, to be able to access a community college course, they have to pass math one, which is freshman math with a C or better. And so that would be either they took it as an eighth grader and passed it there, or perhaps they passed it in the first semester and then would be taking a community college course in the second semester. They have to score to three or better on that math one end-of-course assessment. They have to score to three or better on their eighth grade English EOG, the end-of-grade assessment. And they also have to have a recommendation of their high school principal. Primarily, the thinking here, I believe, is that we're asking high school students to take college courses. So the state wants to make sure they're ready to take a college course. They have the capacity to take the college course. In this case, if you had a student who didn't quite meet that criteria, they would still be able to take the community college courses once they reached eleventh and twelfth grade, and would be able to take the CTE courses perhaps to start that pathway towards what they'd like to do. Now, for a tenth grader, there's an additional caveat. A tenth grader to be able to access the community college courses has to have a weighted GPA of a four point oh on their high school courses. And again, that only applies to our tenth graders. And so that is a bit of a change.
So essentially, under this proposal, so far, our students would be taking their math, their ocean, their normal high school classes at their local high schools, let's say a West Carteret, East Carteret, Croatan. And then they would be bus transported over to take classes that are specific to one of these tracks, like a welding or a marine propulsion or so forth.
Yes, sir.
To take those classes. Is there a possibility, do you think, at some point, that the criteria might be relaxed or changed so that a ninth or tenth grader would be able, who maybe doesn't have these, this criteria, meet the criteria, would be able to take a class that is like a welding or a marine propulsion, something that isn't your typical college transfer type class?
I would love for that to happen. This is a state requirement, and so that would require continued advocacy on our part. And so the possibility, yes, that exists, but unfortunately, that's beyond our opportunity to make that change. We can advocate for that change, certainly working with our partners to advocate for a change like that. But currently, that's a state requirement. So that's not a Carteret Community College requirement, not a requirement of our school system, but certainly something that I'd appreciate. One of the things that does pre-exist my tenure, and something that's a point of pride for me, is the focus in our school system on our career in technical education led by Ms. Allison Dees. And so she works very closely with our community college liaison and directly with the college to align our programs so that a student who's interested in a particular field, for example culinary, taking a foods class at the high school lines up with the culinary program at the community college. And so really, from the standpoint of, one of the values would be that a student who may think, I think I want to go in the culinary field, but not quite sure, takes the foods class at their high school and goes, oh, I definitely want to go into the culinary program, then has some base knowledge and a foundation to build upon when they go to this amazing culinary program at Carteret Community College. And so that exists. But to your specific question, that's a statewide requirement that we'd have to continue to advocate for a change. I certainly understand where it comes from, because we certainly don't want to set any child up to not be successful. And so ensuring that they have the capacity and the background knowledge to be able to be successful is important. And so I do believe that's where that comes from, specifically to our youngest high school students in ninth and tenth grade. But it is a change. And so I want to make sure the board is very aware of the entire layout as you look at this big decision.
So like we currently have at our high schools, the introductory culinary arts classes at our high schools. So the, I guess, the same thing could happen and could be instituted at our other high schools for an intro to marine propulsion, or some, a class that maybe isn't specific to, or doesn't require going over to CCC to be able to take the class?
So absolutely, the answer to that is, yes, everything is absolutely possible. And of course, one of the things we'd always want to look at is to maximize our resources and to ensure that we're putting in place those programs that, one, lead to an opportunity for students to make a living wage beyond high school if they're going right to work after high school. And so part of that challenge, particularly in the CTE world, is to understand the needs of industry. And we very much understand, which is probably the impetus, I believe, of the MAST program, that we have great needs in the marine industry. I had the opportunity to talk to a gentleman who was talking about the needs for boat captains, and what a great career that is, and how well a boat captain can do, but having a hard time finding boat captains. And so we know there's needs there, and so tailoring our CTE program to the needs, particularly the local needs, becomes really important. And so to answer your question, yes, sir, that's possible. And one of the things we'd want to do is continue that work with the community college so that we are aligning our coursework to their coursework so there is a pathway so that when our counselors and our college liaisons sit down with parents and students, they can lay out a plan. If this, then this, then this, then this, here's the outcome, so students can make a good decision and parents can make a good decision. Thank you.
And this is a really important point, and I actually have listed it as a pro and a con. The challenge would be that students have to qualify to get into these classes. And by the way, it's not just the five pathways that they could take the classes on, but it's any...
That's exactly right. So specific to today's conversation, we're talking about the five pathways, but it's actually any of the community college courses. And so, and that's part of, as I shared from the outset, I'm here and committed to every one of our schools and students, as I'm committed to any one of our schools and students. And so for those students that this program works so well for, I want to make sure that we have a viable MAST program, whatever that looks like in the future. But for our other students, those who may aspire to earn a two-year community college degree before going to a four-year university, that's part of the foresight of the board in providing this transportation. So they would be able to access those courses. As ninth and tenth graders, they would still have to meet this criteria.
Well, and that's also a benefit, too, because like you said, we don't want to put, you know, a rising eighth grader, a ninth or tenth grader in a class that they're not going to be successful.
Yes, sir.
Does the weighted GPA change for eleventh graders, or is it still?
No. So these requirements only apply to ninth and tenth graders. And so I'll kind of move along, and then I'll get out of the board's way. The budget for proposal three looks just the same as the budget we just saw for proposal two, and really the same as the budget for proposal one A, in that we would not need to change the composition of the faculty or the number of positions making up the faculty. The difference would be the one hundred forty-seven thousand that we've talked about a couple of times. And again, that assumption of the receipt of the cooperative innovative high school funding of two hundred thousand dollars, I don't think I've mentioned, I do want to make sure I mentioned, the Department of Public Instruction has shared with us that they have made that request as part of their budget request, that MAST received that two hundred thousand dollar funding. Again, no one can know if that's going to come to fruition or not. It was non-recurring dollars last year. However, they have included that as part of their request. This does assume that level funding from our commissioners of two hundred forty-five thousand. And again, we recognize that we would lose the funding for the principal position. And so with proposal three, next steps for proposal three are that we would submit the update form to change the school's focus and target student population. Again, that's all of the proposals. We begin the research on transitioning MAST from a school to a program. We would not need additional staffing. And again, of course, our current students would continue right where they are. So just a very quick overview, because finances certainly have been a big part of this conversation throughout the history of MAST. And so I just want to put all of those proposals side by side here. And so on this slide, the far column on the left is our current year or year three, and you'll see the numbers we've reviewed. Proposal one would be adding ninth and tenth grade to MAST. That would require those two additional teachers. We believe we'd have some ADM funding that would also come along with that. And so you see the difference there. Proposal one A would be adding a ninth grade class to MAST. Proposal two would be transitioning MAST from an early college to a middle college serving grades eleven and twelve. And then proposal three would be the work to transition MAST from school to program, and then moving forward with that. And so, Mr. Chair, I'd be happy to entertain any further questions. And if not, I'll get out of the way so the board can continue the work. We're certainly looking forward to sailing forward with MAST.
You guys have any questions?
I'm pretty sure I need to answer to my question, but in proposal three, in two years, there would no longer be a permanent student population on the CC campus?
Potentially. And part of that work with proposal three is to really begin the work to understand what a countywide program would look like. There may or may not be some sort of presence ongoing for those students who are in the MAST program from across the county. And so it would be hard for me to say yes or no, because that's work to be done. It would be a school-wide program, so I could see, well, maybe we don't need a physical presence. But at the same time, if we're bringing students from all over the county, we may very rarely need a physical presence. Mr. Johnson would tell us that the lighthouse room is quite popular for students to sit down and do their work, particularly as we have so many remote learning and virtual learning opportunities. And so there may need to continue to be a virtual presence. Under that proposal, under any of these proposals, and I should have said, maybe I have, we would work very closely with Dr. Mancini and her staff to ensure that MAST continues to be successful under any of these proposals that we sell forward in a very positive way for our students.
So under proposal three, we would potentially not be limited to fifty students per year, but we could open this up even larger to provide the opportunities to lots more students. So I guess we'd have the flexibility to have as few students as were necessary versus compared to scaling up a lot more?
Yes, sir. I would love to have to say to Dr. Mancini, we need a whole lot more welding instructors, because we have a lot of kids who are ready to be welders. But that's exactly right. So we would have the opportunity to remove the maximums and potentially the minimums. Of course, I would think from the community college, they'd need a certain number of students to be able to generate the class, so there may be a minimum. I don't know what that would be, and maybe not, because the adult learners would be a part of that equation as well. However, there would not be a maximum, because we'd be bringing them under that proposal, if that's the way the board goes.
Dennis, I apologize. Did you say under proposal three, there would not be our students on the campus? Was that your question?
In two years, potentially, there would not be a permanent institution there.
Now, my understanding is that we could potentially have more students on your campus. Now, they might not be in a confined classroom, but potentially, we could offer more students, more programs.
Correct. And it opens up to the accelerated students, which proposes one, one, and two, do not. And so we have a potential more students who are part of MAST. But there are students who belong to Croatan, West Carteret, and East Carteret.
And I also, I see it as not only having, for proposal three, not only having, we're not eliminating that third group. So instead of just having, you know, the welding and the aquaculture, we're also allowing the accelerated students to move forward as well. And so that does open up the doors for a lot of students. That's how I see proposal three.
Yeah. Part of the attraction, as a parent and a student, would be that I can take part in MAST, I can get college credit, therefore I reduce my expenses to go to college. The only proposal that really addresses this, in my mind, well to the accelerated student who would fit into that, is proposal three.
Okay.
I actually liked proposal two, the first few slides from that. You're not asking someone coming right out of middle school to make a decision until you got to the last slide of that, and Career in College Promise addresses it. So I don't see the benefit of number two. But proposal three, as long as I understand it, we're not, clearly K-12 education is going to a choice, and I think that's part of the benefit of MAST. So when we're recreating MAST as a countywide program, we're not taking away some of these college, community college offerings. We are, and I'm asking this, we are giving them their basics, their English math at the high schools, and then potentially busing them in the afternoon?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Transporting them in the afternoon.
I'm sorry. Transporting, yeah.
I have a couple of comments. We've got a higher percentage of disconnected youth than other counties around us, and I feel like by taking away the actual structure of the MAST program as it is, we're taking away the big perk for those students that we've given them right now, which is the family feel and the environment. And then the, a really big argument against one is, will we have the students for the school? But if I was a parent sitting on this side of the board, and I Google our schools, Croatan, East and West come up with the school website, a great school's website rating, and a USA Today article about being a top high school in the nation. If you Google MAST, it comes up with Travis's website, newspaper articles, lawsuits, and fourth is the school website. Why, as a parent on this side, would you ever pick MAST for your kid when it hasn't had the support and doesn't have the reputation that it has the possibility to have?
And I will tell you, this board, and most of you... And I, and I will tell you, the, this board, and most of you aren't even up here for this, I don't think that this, I think it's because of the board. And I think, I don't think we did, I, I think we rushed into the program, and I totally agree with you. Why would you want to put your kid in kind of a volatile situation? I do think we potentially rushed into it. It was always, always pitched as a vocational program. And yesterday, for those of you that were in the county commissioners meeting, multiple commissioners mentioned that, you know, you told us this was a vocational program. And, and we just haven't deliberated on that, and that's part of the reason I think the funding paused for last year. And so I, I want to thank the community college. This has been a trying on our relationship, and it certainly wasn't meant to be. We really appreciate your support. Last year was difficult for us to have to ask for that funding. Katie, Dennis, you guys are kind of coming in, you don't have the benefit of all the experience from the applications to the, you know, the implementing. And Dr. Jackson, I can't tell you how much I appreciate your team putting these thoughtful proposals together. But in my mind, when I start weighing the challenges and the benefits, to me, there's one clear pathway forward, which would offer more programs to more students. Any other questions or comments or ideas?
I come to this from a different viewpoint than any of you because I have no agenda and am just kind of looking at it and trying to see it from all sides. The good part of it being a part of the Carteret County of the school is that we can do a better job of protecting, especially East Carter, that we haven't done a really good job thus far. And that's a concern. There's nothing to prevent, I think, a private or charter school coming up and doing the same thing that they thought MAST was supposed to do. What concerns me down the road, should that occur, then we have no input or influence to protect our numbers and the potential brain drain that was used before, especially for East Carter. I only mention that as something, a potential down the road that I would not want to see happen. It doesn't fix anything, it doesn't address any of the proposals.
That's a, that's a valid point, Dennis. You know, I look at this from a bigger picture, you know, I've spent a lot of time looking into MAST, studying the history of MAST, studying the history of school choice, why we have charter schools, why we have early colleges. And it seems to me that the state of North Carolina, and I'm not blaming this on the state, but it seemed to fill us, we've got an antiquated school system, we have not changed with the times, and that's bred charter schools and early colleges, which are great because it serves a purpose. When you've got an antiquated system, you need something. You know, we're in a time where we've sort of wiped our palate clean. You know, this pandemic is giving us an opportunity, maybe, to do something outside the box, something, you know, nobody else in the county is going to do. The reality is for me, and this has been the reality the whole time, I've talked to Craig Horn, you know, before he retired, I've reached out to him, I've understood recurring and non-recurring funding, why Carter County wasn't funded to begin with. But the reality of me is, in good conscience, I can't every year say, let's keep going with MAST, not knowing that we have a way to pay for it. I mean, I can't put those kids through it, I can't put the parents through it, and I can't put this board and the teachers through it. That's just what it comes down to. I mean, every year, I love every kid in this county. If any of y'all know me, I've got two kids in the school system. My son plays lacrosse with a guy named Jake Johnson, who was one of the greatest kids in the world, and he goes to MAST. I love that kid. I love these kids, but I can't in good conscience, every year, go through this for those kids. I mean, that's what it comes down to for me. I mean, it's just plain and simple. And it disappoints me that we are sitting here and we've had arguments with each other because someone in the state drops the ball and doesn't care, they, they're worried about Medicare. And so we're, our budget gets cut. And that's what it comes down to. It's terrible. You know, if you've got a beef, take it to the state. I do every day. They hate hearing from me. They hate hearing from me. And I copy Dr. Jackson, I think he hates hearing from me. But that's, you know, that's what it comes down, you know, if we can do something in Carteret County and not have the state have its hands in it, and we can create something good and something positive, and something that has the heart of what MAST is, why wouldn't we do that? Why wouldn't we cut the state out of it? You know, it's a no brainer to me, but just my opinion.
I, I think Clark and I have, probably through this entire journey, have felt very similar. I think that we've kind of been in line for the most part. And I, I'm like Clark, you know, I keep writing down proposal one, you know, if we don't get the $200,000, then we're in a $445,000 deficit. Proposal one A, $347,000 deficit. And I feel like Clark, I feel like we're putting these families through the wringer, and it's over and over and over again. So for me, proposal three feels right. But I say that, and I'd like to say that kind of like Katie was saying, with the family feel and, and kids being able to have these smaller settings, I'd like to see where maybe we have, we've said this before, some smaller academies within our current high schools where these kids can maybe have smaller cohorts and they have similar interests as far as moving forward with their careers and things that, you know, similar interest. And that way that we can, we can reach more students. And it just, I hate, I'm like Clark, I hate that we're still here and still having to put families through this.
Yeah. And Brittany, I want to say that too, that the MAST parents, I can't imagine what you've had to go through and the students over the last couple of years with the uncertainty, and I apologize for that. But to Clark's point, MAST to me is not a classroom. It's a concept of allowing children, young adults, a different pathway. And the staff there and Mr. Johnson have done a phenomenal job leading these children. And I think, I also support proposal three, and I'm going to make a motion going forward to support proposal three. But I think that we can offer more programs to more children for less expense. And so with that said, Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to consider proposal three.
We have got a motion by Mr. McLean to consider proposal three. Do I have a second?
Second.
We've got a second by Reverend Goodwin. All in favor, raise your right hand. Any opposed? The motion has passed unanimously, we will...
Not unanimously.
Not unanimously, I'm sorry, Katie. Motion has passed and...
Six to one.
And we will move forward.
And Dr. Jackson, I know you, you presented this, but going forward, just tell us quickly what the next days, weeks, and months look like for proposal three.
Absolutely. Thank you. Under proposal three, the staff working closely with Principal Johnson and again with Dr. Mancini, I've mentioned her name several times, and I'll continue to do that because she's such an important partner in this work, will begin to do the work around the logistics for ensuring that we're communicating with families about this opportunity. We will continue and in proposal three, as in all proposals, the current students, the board has committed to them, and if this isn't accurate, please, please let me know, but committed to our current students that they'll continue until they graduate from MAST on campus. So we'll continue to make sure we're serving those students and those families. We'll work on the logistics of what this means, and so we'll reach out to the Department of Public Instruction for, for their guidance as well. And so we'll begin to do that work and then do a regular update to the Board of Education of where we are. And so moving forward on campus, current students will matriculate into 11th and 12th grade, and then we'll open up the program as early as this August to students across the county. And so we've got some work to do to make that happen, but we, we're, we're looking forward to sailing forward with MAST under any of the proposals, and we'll move forward with proposal three.
Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Denied.
Mr. McLean makes a question, a second? Mr. Day, all in favor? We are adjourned.
Five of you, five of you voted years ago.